What's up, what's up, Dee?
Good morning, everyone. We'll get started shortly. Right now, we have a technical issue. They had to reboot our system, our mics and the screen are not working, so just give us a few minutes and we will get started with the meeting.
We need, uh... We need new chairs. We're sliding out of this chair. Me too. As long as we don't throw it off.
Say good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to our Henry County Board of Commissioners Tuesday, March 1st, 2022, regularly scheduled board meeting. We will begin off with our invocation by Pastor Carter from the Henry County Sheriff's Office, followed by our pledge of allegiance. Everyone would stand, please.
Shall we pray? Eternal God, our Father, we come now to say thank you. God, we thank you for this time that we share together. God, we thank you that we have made it safe thus far. Now, Master, we ask your blessings be upon our leaders. God, touch their hearts, continue to guide them with your Spirit. God, we thank you for the men and women that serve tirelessly every day. God, we thank you that we are now in a situation where leaders can make decisions to affect humanity. Thank you now that you have laid upon the hearts of those that have been elected and selected and appointed for this time. God, allow their decisions to be guided with your love and with your compassion for mankind. Now, God, as they prepare to deliberate and share one with another, allow them to do it in harmony. God, that the way of life is at stake here. We love Henry County. God, we love our neighbors. God, we love those that may not look like us. But today, we can make a difference through the individuals that sit in seats of power. Guide them now, only like you can. My prayer is consistent, God. Do for us what we cannot do for ourselves. It's in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
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 To the God of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. There will be following amendment to the agenda. The Henry County Development Authority Year in Review will be removed from the agenda at this particular time. It will be replaced by a resolution that will be read by our county clerk, Stephanie Braun. If you would come forward.
Good morning, board members. I'd like to read a resolution from House Resolution 833, proposed by Representatives Holly Crowe and Mathiak and Louis Ward and others. A resolution recognizing and commending Sherri Hobson Matthews on her outstanding public service as Henry County's county manager and for other purposes. Whereas Sherri Hobson Matthews has long been recognized by the citizens of the state for the vital role that she has played in leadership and her deep personal commitment to the welfare of the citizens of Georgia. Whereas beginning her career with Henry County as a planner, too, in 2002, Sherri's dedication to excellence allowed her to rise to the position of Director of Transportation Planning, where she managed a 1.2 million comprehensive transportation plan and won top honors from the Georgia Planning Association for Outstanding Planning Document. Whereas she continued to earn promotions and eventually became the interim Division Director for Community Development, a position where she supervised the planning and zoning, building, GIS, and community development block grant departments. Whereas she has long been cherished by the residences and businesses of Henry County as a problem solver and peacekeeper, whose sense of duty to her responsibilities transcends party lines. Whereas in addition to her role as county manager, where she oversees a workforce of nearly 1,700 employees and manages a 190 million budget, Sherri also devotes her time and talents to various charitable and civic endeavors. Whereas she has diligently and conscientiously devoted innumerable hours of her time, talents, and energy toward the betterment of her community and state, as evidenced dramatically by her superlative service as a board member for Prevent Child Abuse Henry County, and a person of magnanimous strength with an impeccable reputation for integrity, intelligence, fairness, and kindness. Whereas it is abundantly fitting and proper that the outstanding accomplishments of this remarkable and distinguished Georgian be appropriately recognized. Now therefore, be it resolved by those House of Representatives, that the members of this body recognize and commend Sherri Hobson Matthews for her efficient, effective, unselfish, and dedicated public service to the state of Georgia, and extend the most sincere best wishes for continued health and happiness. Be it further resolved that the clerk of the House of Representatives is authorized and directed to make an appropriate copy of this resolution available for distribution to Sherri Hobson Matthews.
I'd like to just get a picture of Sherri.
Thank you, Sherri, for all of your hard work. We move forward with the recognition of county employee retirements. If we could get our HR Director Harold Cooper to please come forward.
Good morning, Madam Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, distinguished board members. Today, we honor four retirees with 44 years of combined experience. First, Ms. Eve Delkey, 15 years of service with Henry County's Tax Commissioners Office. Second, Mr. Charles Mears, 13 years of service with Henry County Police Department. Third, Mr. Anthony Wilson, 10 years of service with Henry County Sheriff's Office. And last but not least, Ms. Diane Rossar, six years of service with Henry County Juvenile Courts. We want to thank them for their undying commitment and service to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have the Board of Ethics of Henry County. This is a presentation only.
Good morning, members of the board. I'm here to speak with you regarding the Board of Ethics established under Senate Bill 22. I'm not going to go over all the details, but just give you an overall review of what the new Board of Ethics, what the law requires. So I'm going to go over the qualifications for the members of the Board of Ethics, the prohibited conduct, the authority that the Board of Ethics has based by the legislation passed, and the chairperson, Ms. Henderson, will provide you with an update regarding where we're at now with the Board of Ethics. The Board of Ethics is composed of seven members and two alternates. Five members are appointed or were appointed or overseen by the district attorney. Two members were appointed by the tax commissioners, and two alternates were selected by the Clerk of Superior Court of Henry County. The qualifications for the members require them to be a resident of Henry County for at least one year. They had to have a professional knowledge or expertise in the areas of ethics, finance, governance, or the law. Two years prior to serving on the board, the members could not have had a contract or interest in a county contract. They could not be an official or an employee of Henry County. Three years preceding service at the board, they could not have been a candidate or held public office. And of course, they can't have a felony conviction. The authority that they have, they have the authority to establish procedures, rules, and regulations to govern and conduct their affairs. They render advisory opinions with respect to the interpretation and application of the statute, excuse me, the ordinance, which SB 22, Section 7.1, and how it's applied. They get to receive hearing complaints, and they investigate if any official or employee has violated or is about to violate any conduct prescribed in Section 7.1(c). They also hold hearings and make inquiries as it deems necessary, and although I don't have it listed here, they're also able to render decisions regarding, for lack of a better word, punishments, whether it's sanction, a public reprimand, or referring the case to the Henry County Solicitors or District Attorney's Office. This is basically conduct that's going to be prohibited by officials and employees. I did not go through all of the conduct, but these are a couple of things that I peeled from the legislation that officials and employees are prohibited from doing. They cannot directly or indirectly request or receive a gift, loan, or thing of value for himself or herself that may influence an official or employee in carrying out their duties. They cannot disclose or utilize confidential information acquired by virtue of his or her position, and they cannot engage in conduct prohibited by law that is applicable by virtue of their positions. There's also a section of the legislation that prohibits conduct specifically for the Board of Commissioners, and that includes, the Board of Commissioners cannot issue directives to employees who report to the county manager. They cannot threaten to fire a county employee, and they cannot threaten to terminate a county contract so as to exert undue influence. And they cannot engage in conduct that is unbecoming to a member of the Board of Commissioners. The statute, excuse me, the legislation does not elaborate on what that means exactly, so that will be, basically, the Board of Ethics will have to contemplate that and see what is unbecoming. But there's nothing in the legislation to actually define what that action is specifically. There are two ways to file a complaint. A complaint could be filed anonymously to the Ethics Administrator in a format determined by the Ethics Administrator, or a sworn written complaint may be filed with the Ethics Administrator as set out in Section 7.1, the legislation. The Board of Ethics Commissioners should provide to the Board of Ethics adequate office and meeting spaces. They also have to pay all administrative costs, including the cost of an ethics officer, who is described as a licensed attorney, who has five years of experience. They also are able to employ an ethics administrator, and the legislation provides that the Board of Ethics has the authority to propose a budget. If the budget proposal exceeds $200,000, the Board of Commissioner has the authority to approve the additional amount requested. And I'm going to let Ms. Chair Henderson introduce herself and give any further update.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, Honorable Commissioners, County Administration, and all Henry County employees. It is my pleasure to represent the Henry County Board of Ethics in this meeting today. I'm sorry, this is not the way it's supposed to.
You need to push it down.
Okay, there we are. Thank you. And so I just want to do a quick introduction of our Board of Ethics members, and we may have some in the audience today, so when I call your names, just stand up so they can put names with faces. Again, I'm Inquilla Henderson, and I was elected to serve as Chair, and it's an honor to do so. We have Sharon Dewberry, who represents District 1, Desmond McLean, District 2, who's also our Vice Chair, Antonio Taylor, who represents District 4, Craig Simmons, District 5, Cynthia Cornog, who was appointed for the Tax Commissioners appointee, Douglas Alex Butler, Tax Commissioner appointee, and he's also serving as our secretary. And then our two alternate members, Thomas Lari, Clerk of Superior Court, and Lindsey Mack-McDaniel, Clerk of Superior Court, alternate. So those are our members, and I know one was here today, so glad to represent the board. We do have the critical, yet exciting job to stand up the ethics program, and we consider it an honor and privilege to voluntarily serve this great county. So our budget priorities, which have been submitted to you as individual line items, really fall into four buckets. We are intently focused on making sure that we can stand up this program, and to do so, we are focusing our efforts on recruitment and hiring the ethics officer and the ethics administrator. As Attorney Nancy just mentioned, those are two positions that are required by statute, and so we are very eager to get those positions filled. Board training, so as a first-time board for the county, we are looking at going through training with the Carl Vinson Institute of Government. They have a training for our type of board that they're willing to conduct with us. And then third is branding. We want to procure services to develop the ethics website and other program materials and brochures to let people know that we exist, and there is a program available here in the county. And then finally, office supplies and software, just general startup software, technology, equipment, to make sure that we're able to operate. And then you all, it's kind of hard to see this, but these are line-by-line items for the expenses that we expect to incur this fiscal year that ends June 30th. And so we will prepare our FY '23 budget for submission to begin on July the 1st, in accordance with the county's fiscal calendar. And so that concludes my informational presentation.
That concludes the presentation overall. If there are no questions, we'll have a seat. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I'd like to have our county manager come forward and read the consent agenda, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. This is your consent agenda for Tuesday, March 1st, 9:00 a.m. Under the Police Department, we have a resolution to approve the bid for the purchase of suppressors and rails and declare surplus the trade-in of weapons and ammunition and inventory from Quiet Riot for the Henry County Police Department SWAT team. After purchase and trade-in of surplus equipment, Henry County will have a credit amount of $4,520 to use in-store or payable by check. Also, under the Police Department, we have a resolution approving a trade of assets between Henry County Police Department and Butts County Sheriff's Department. Under Facility Maintenance, we have a resolution awarding a contract to Cone Inc. to supply elevator repair, modernization, and related products to obtain compliance of elevators located in all county buildings in the amount of $1,841,742.86, using capital improvement plans, funds, as approved by the Board in the CIP. Under Planning and Zoning, we have a resolution approving an agreement with ACCG Civic Affairs Foundation to accept a grant to hire two interns to perform planning and zoning projects in summer 2022. Under SLOSS, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving a reimbursement agreement with Snapping Shoals EMC for Fairview Road not to exceed the amount of $24,000. We also have under SLOSS a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving a change order from JR Bowman Construction Company in the amount of $63,563.58 for remediating unsuitable soil on the ramp adjacent to the new FBO Terminal Building at the Atlanta Speedway Airport. And then finally, under Transportation Planning, we have a resolution approving an agreement with ACCG Civic Affairs Foundation to accept a grant to hire an intern and perform transportation planning projects in summer 2022. Chair Harrell, this ends the consent agenda.
I'd like to request a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a first, got a motion, got a second. If there's no discussion, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Human Resources, resolution approving employee pay increase.
Good morning again, board members. It's an honor to stand before you today. We first embarked on this journey in November, when the Department of Human Resources and the Department of Financial Services talked about a pay increase and what would be feasible because of the inflation rates that we're currently enduring. As you all know, we're the ninth largest county in the state of Georgia with over 244,000 citizens. Recent trends show that recruitment and retention efforts are very, very competitive, not just with our neighboring counties, but also internally with local municipalities. Also, market data shows that pay is typically the third or fourth reason why people leave their jobs, so morale is key as well. Again, we embarked on this journey in November. November 12th, the Financial Services Department conducted a financial analysis to determine what would be a sustainable and financially feasible increase. Based on their analysis, a 10.5% increase across the board would have had a total additional expense of $6.6 million for the remainder of the FY '22 budget cycle, and they deemed that appropriate. We presented this information to the board December 14th initially. Subsequent to that board meeting, we also presented different scenarios to the board at a February board meeting where we identified six different pay scenarios, and we identified the pros and cons with those scenarios. And we still could not reach a happy median in terms of what could be approved. So subsequently, after that point, the Financial Services Department conducted another financial analysis. And that analysis was done on February 16th of 2022, when we looked at a 7% increase in how would that fare in terms of the total impact for the remainder of the FY '22 budget year. And as you could see, the impact would be $4.35 million. Also, it's key to note that there were some concerns about who would get the pay increase in terms of Henry County employees, and how is that defined? So the people who will not be able to receive such an increase are employees such as the Board of Commissioners, Henry County Constitutional Officers, the magistrate judges, state employees receiving a county supplement, and poll workers. Both studies showed from our Financial Services Department that in addition to the various pay increase options, we would still be able to sustain our 2% COLA and our 1% longevity increase for July 1st. And also, as you well know, economists across this great nation have stated that if employers does not give a minimum of a 5.4% increase to employees, employees are essentially coming to work taking a pay cut in these days and times. Another key piece to either option that we have on the table today, a 10.5% or 7% increase, is that our pay grades will stay intact as well as our pay scale. So it will not be compromised at all. In fact, each pay grade subsequent step would be 1% higher than the previous step to remain consistent with past practices. So continuity will still be there. Here is the financial impact, a closer look at it. As you could see, if we look at Scenario 1, a 10.5% increase would be a full-year impact of $13.1 million. A six-month impact, like I stated earlier, would be $6.6 million. And Scenario 7, which is the 7% increase, would be $8.7 million for the full year and $4.35 million, like I stated earlier, in terms of the six-month impact. This chart was presented to the board back in February as it relates to public safety. Since then, we've added another municipality, the city of Forest Park, who has just under 20,000 residents. And this chart shows the various percentage increases that local municipalities have provided their public safety departments. And these increases range from 3.5% to as high as 20%. And just recently, February of this year, the city of Forest Park have approved a 15% increase for their public safety department, which will bring their starting salary up to $46,600, which is roughly $3,164 above our starting pay for our starting police and firefighters. firefighters. These raises were approved as early as September of last year and as most current, and as I've just stated, uh, February as of last week with the City of Forest Park. In reference to non-public safety, you have 11 municipalities up here, and we've also included the Henry County Water Authority and the State of Georgia. Here, the pay raises range from as small as 4% to as, as high as 10.45%. And when we look at the State of Georgia, they're doing a cash amount of $5,000, and when we look at Henry County Water Authority, who we're in constant competition with as well, they're doing a cash amount of $3,500. 938 current full-time employees reside in Henry County. That makes up 58% of our full-time workforce. We have 1,601 full-time employees. When you look at, when we first brought this initiative to the Board, December 14th, 2021, and you look at to current, March 1st, there are 55 business days in between that timeframe, and we know business days are Monday through Friday. And within that timeframe, we've lost 78 employees, and 61 of those employees resigned. That's 78% of the 78 employees we've lost during a 55-day timeframe. We must act. And if we act on a 10.5% or 7% increase today, this would be a substantial incentive in the county's effort to retain staff and also recruit staff. And in closing, I'd like to quote Shakespeare, "Sweet are the uses of adversity, but there's good in all things." The sweet spots of our adversity during this journey has been the debate we've had over the methodology, the debate we've had over the percentage increases, the debate we've had over who should or shouldn't get the increase. But, just like Shakespeare stated, "There's good in all things," today can be good for all employees of Henry County if a resolution is adopted and approved by this distinguished board. I yield for questions.
Thank you, Harrell, for, um, the presentation. This has been before the Board three times, uh, about approving a raise for our employees here at the county. I know there has been discussion about class and comp studies. We've had them, whether it was 2017 or 2019 or whenever they were done. I know that you guys are doing an update, but we can't wait for a class and comp study. We've got to act today. We have beat this raise thing like a dead horse, and employees deserve a raise. We must remain competitive. We've got to stop the bleed, and we need to do the right thing as commissioners sitting up here.
And Madam Chair, let me interject. We've started the process for the Phase 2 of the class and comp study. Uh, that information is in our procurement office.
Mm-hmm. This will not increase our mileage rate. This will not bankrupt the county. This is sustainable, and we, as the Board of Commis-, Commissioners, need to do the right thing. And I'm asking to approve the motion for 10.5% pay raise. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Are there any questions or discussion? Commissioner Thomas.
I have some question, Mr. Cooper, uh, about what we're doing. You say that you've already started the 10.5%. Um, I'm sorry, you've already started the class and comp study. Where are you? What are you looking for as timeframe of getting some of that completed?
Aggressively, ma'am, it can be anywhere from four to eight months.
Okay. Uh, also, I'd like to know, when we talked about who would be included in, in this whole process, and you gave us a list, also, that should, that should include anybody that's on the contract, or MOU would not be included in this pay increase, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, the next thing you gave us were the numbers for, it's 10.5% and 7%. Do you have any projections for year two, Mr. Smith, or how this would be impacted? Would it be nearly the same amount, or have you got any numbers to share with us for going forward?
So it'd be nearly the same amount for the full year, but it would be sustainable, given that our growth rate in collections for revenue inclusive, includes those amounts.
And also, Mr. Smith, we have these 300-plus people of vacancies at this point in time. Have you done a scenario to see how that would impact this number when we start to fill those positions? Um, how much would this increase per year go up, do you think?
We currently include those vacancies when we do budgets, so those numbers are already accounted for in that, unless we do additional raises.
Okay. Yeah.
Com- Commissioner Wilson?
Thank you. Thank you. I was just checking my questions.
Commissioner Wilson, did you have a question?
Just time.
Okay. Commissioner Holmes?
Yeah, I guess where I'm having a problem is with the employees that, um, are making well over $100,000. Um, those employees will go up 10,000 to 20,000 overnight in pay increase, but then we have employees making 20, 30, 40, $50,000 who aren't getting the same treatment. So it's not equitable. I, um, I would make a suggestion that, um, that we give 10.5% to all employees under $80,000.
We have a motion on the floor for 10 and 1/2 across the board. It has been second, and I am asking for a vote. Okay, you, you had something else?
Yeah, I mean, you know, 13, I just, you know, you guys are the ones, the people that, um, will benefit the most, uh, from this pay increase are the ones that actually did the study. So of course, you're going to be pro, hey, let's move forward, let's give employees making $180,000 a 10.5% increase. But we really should be looking after public safety, DOT, all the plu-, all the employees at the lower end of the spectrum, and, you know, that's not happening.
Well, I think that, uh, it regardless, if, if we're talking 10 and 1/2 across the board, if we've got employees that are making $80,000 or more, everybody are, is, is here. They are professionals, they have degrees. We are being competitive against other counties that are paying their managers and directors. If you're here to do a job, you need to be paid. It is not up to us to dictate, uh, because you feel or people feel that individuals that make over a certain amount shouldn't make any more. I mean, people are here to do a job every day, and they come in here every single day, do their job, make sure that the services that we are required to provide for the citizens of this county. And we want to nitpick about, cause someone makes over a certain amount. Our chief of police needs to be paid. Our fire chief needs to be paid. Our county manager needs to be paid, and all of our directors deserve it for the work that they do here. Commissioner Wilson?
I have a question in reference to the, um, 10.5 and the 7%. And I need you all to clarify, if the 10.5 with the COLA is really 13.5, and if the 7% with the COLA is really 10%, or does this 10.5 include the COLA? So please explain that, if it's really 13.5 and if it's really 10.
It's currently 10.5 to address the immediate need, and come July 1st, we do intend to do the, which the Board has already approved from the time that I've been here, where you wanted your employees to continue to receive raises where they hadn't received raises before. You always included a 10, 2% cost-of-living adjustment. At that time, inflation was at 2%. We also included a 1% longevity. So that is going to take place, which is what the Board had asked us to do, starting July 1st. So the 10.5% is immediate to try to address and stem the tide of the retention crisis that we're experiencing right now.
But then it'll be 13.5 in July?
It will be an additional 2% COLA and 1% longevity.
I'm, I'm, I'm.
So it's 10, it's 10.5 right now, that's correct. But there will be an additional 2% COLA, and for those eligible, a 1% longevity.
In the next few years.
Correct. And what this addresses, and what this does address, is it addresses those people that were unable to receive longevity before, because we're addressing the entire pay scale itself, adjusting it 10.5% across the board.
And let me say, David, I don't have a problem with that, but I just want real numbers. What I want to see is the 13.5. If 10.5% makes it 6.6 million increase.
For the next, that's over the six-month period, man.
For the next few months. I just want to be transparent.
Yes, ma'am.
For the next few months. In July, this coming July 2022, it will go up to 13, to 10, 10.5 plus 2, plus 1 for people who get one, at least 12.
No, ma'am. We're adjusting the entire pay scale 10 and 1/2% right now. Then, my salary, it's $100, so I would receive $110. On July 1st, I'm going to receive only 3% more, so it becomes $113, not an additional $10 on top of that.
Commissioner, um.
Okay, my, the rest of it is, uh, are we going to go back, and we need to go back and make sure that we make this retroactive, whatever we vote on today, that we will go back to January and make sure that those employees get that pay, not starting March, but they would go back, they would go back and get it for January?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, also, I would like to see us add, in the bid further resolved, that the, um, when the class and comp, I want to know how you're going to address this. When the class and comp study comes back, people that have received 10.5 whose salary is more than the class and comp study says, how do we address that?
Their salary won't move. Their salary will stay stacked, you know, uh, because we're going to be transparent, like you mentioned, when the class and comp study, when we identify a firm that does it, they're going to come and give a presentation to the Board.
And so we'll have some, we may have, if we have employees that make more than what they were supposed to make, based on the class and comp study, they'll just sit there. But will we, can we do something to add a cap on to that? Um, so, because we're going to need to increase salaries every year. We need to not have to do this anymore. We need a resolution in place that automatically says in three years, a class and comp study is redone immediately and everybody's addressed. This should never have to happen again like this. So I would like to see us add, in the resolution, something to say that a class and comp study is going to be done on a regular basis, and how we would address people who are already, uh, maxed out.
We've identified that, and our personnel policy as well, but we've, we've, we've had some, uh, trying times for getting that adopted as well.
Okay, we can add it to this.
But we can do that at a later time. Today, we're here to vote on this raise. Commissioner Wilson?
Question, last, last July, did we have a cross-the-board raise, and did we just have the 3% for the employees? Was there a cross-the-board raise, other than cost-of-living and longevity?
We didn't have an across-the-board raise.
We did not have a cross-the-board raise.
Because the raise that the Board had wanted was to ensure that employees received something.
Right.
And so we did the 2% and the 1% longevity to ensure that each year, our employees receive something, because there were years where they hadn't received anything.
All right. Oh, I have one more thing.
Go ahead, Commissioner Wilson.
Commissioner Clem, as you mentioned, but retro back to Dees, uh, January 1st, I'd like to go back to December 1st, because this was presented initially November, in November meeting.
No, December 14th, sir.
December 14th, but you had the resolution ready in, in November?
No, we, we had discussions amongst our department because we noticed that we were experiencing retention issues at that point. So Financial Services and HR.
So it wasn't on the agenda to be heard in November, then?
We brought it to you all in December.
Right, but it was on the agenda to be heard, but we didn't have a meeting, correct?
I, I don't, I don't.
That's correct.
Okay, so.
That is correct.
That's right. So we could go back to December 1st instead of January 1st.
I think the presentation that you're saying, and if we do the full year, it's 13 million plus. If we do six months, it's six mil-, 6.6 million.
Correct.
That is correct.
So what does our resolution say far as retro?
It says effective January 1st.
Okay, so, okay. There are no other further questions. We have a motion and a second.
One question.
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
When you, um, talked about in July, we have our budgeting basically hearings, we will also have an opportunity to revisit what new increases would be for the year going forth, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we're looking at doing some form of compensation now of increases, uh, knowing that a 3% is due in July, plus an addition can be done in July as well, based on the budget hearings that we have, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
A motion is on the floor. There has been a second. All in favor?
I'd like to put forth the motion.
Okay.
I'd like to put forth the motion that we go with the second scenario of 7% across the board for the present time, knowing that we have a 3% coming in July, in addition to that, knowing that we have an opportunity for addition increases in July as well, and also that we, um, do a retro pay for this, going back to December of 2021.
January of 2021.
January?
Yes, ma'am.
Not January.
Do you want to go back to December?
Oh, okay.
January is the whole year. I thought we presented in December 2021, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that would be December of 2021.
Got a motion and a second for seven. Yes.
At the state level, they are, they are having discussions about commissioners' pay going up 13 and 1/2% in the State of Georgia.
Well, it's going.
So this Board is subject to get a 13 and 1/2% raise in the next couple of months, which would be affected in our next, in our next budget year, July. So we, so we sitting up here trying to talk about the 13 and 1/2% that employees may get, but there's possibility that the commissioners may get a 13 and 1/2% raise. Yep?
And we don't want to give our employees the 10, 10.5, but we're going to take a 13%.
And then I have people call us, what does commissioners make? Well, I'll show you what we make. Stephanie, could you?
We don't have to take the 13%.
Yes, you do.
You have to take it.
You don't, yes, you do.
Going across the state?
Yes, it's going across the state. Yes, sir.
So, instead of me trying to tell you what the Board of Commissioners make, I'm going to share what my W-2 form says, okay? This is my W-2 form. $37,000 a year. You throw a 13 and 1/2% raise on that, we're going to be making about as much as police officers start off at. As part-time commissioners, we're going to be making about as much as police officers start at. You give us the scenario, Mr. Cooper, about the starting pay for police officers, with $43,000, correct?
Correct.
We add 13 and 1/2% of that, we're going to make, we're going to make more than what police officers start at. Now, we're going to sit here and talk about how many raises people are going to get, what they're going to make at full-time, and we're going to sit up here as part-time commissioners and make more than our full-time public safety at starting pay? I want to thank all the men and women that come to work for Henry County every single day to do their job. Our workforce has decreased, their workload has increased. We have, according to the Wall Street Journal, we have a 7 and 1/2% increase of inflation. They are, basically, a 7 and 1/2 decrease in their paycheck. We're asking them to do more for less. There's not a call that goes through the public safety that don't get answered. There's not a work order through DOT, facility maintenance, or the parks and wrecks that don't go unfilled. But yet- But yet again, we're gonna ask them not to take, we're not gonna give them a ten and a half, but we're gonna receive a thirteen and a half as Board of Commissioners? We need to rethink that one.
Yes ma'am.
Um, first of all, that's information that I had no knowledge of, so thank you for sharing it. That's not anything that I have about thirteen. Let me finish sir, I didn't, I didn't interrupt you. I did ask permission and she granted the floor to me.
Hold on. There's some order here.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to acknowledge that I have no idea about a thirteen percent increase that, um, Commissioner Wilson shared. No knowledge of it, and that is the truth. And if he has knowledge from people that he knows, he shared it. The goal is today Chair Horell, as you have stated, to give our employees some form of incentive to say that we do care. We went through a process, it's a step process, but it gets us there. With the seven and a half, then a three, then coming back and add in addition to it in July, it does get us there. Is it perfect? Absolutely not. But I would like us not to leave here with nothing again for these employees. That's all we're saying, nothing. So we can go ahead and do this at this point in time and step through it. And I do know this is emotionally charged, but we've tried to go through this whole process. And I want to thank this, this financial board and, uh, Ms. Hobbs. We've had several meetings before this meeting to talk about how do these numbers play out? How can we get to something that we can walk out of here with and say we've rewarded these employees? And that's where the two scenarios came from.
Commissioner Wilson.
I think I've said everything I need to say, Chair.
And this information was shared through ACCG. If people read their emails, this was sent saying that the state would give us this. So this was shared with every commissioner that sits up here, um, that the state was going to be giving us a thirteen percent raise. Um, so, we have a motion on the floor and a second, can we get a vote?
Okay, uh, Chair, I would like for us to take a recess and let's get this.
We need to do something.
Let's do this.
Madam Chair, if I may.
You can call for recess.
Madam Chair, if I may, point of, point of order. Madam Vice Chair, what is your immediate concern with regard to the ten and a half percent right now? Because it's necessary just to get us caught up.
I have a motion, Chair, would you allow me to make a motion?
Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to give ten point five percent across the board for all employees under eighty thousand. And every employee above eighty thousand, give them seven percent, knowing that they will get an additional ten point five in July. I think that everybody deserves something and I just want to know.
You got a motion on the floor, can we get a second? You got a second, all in favor.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
We heard ten and a half, we've heard seven. I think it's, I think it's, uh, proper for the board to split it down the middle, eight and a half. Go back, retro pay everybody from January first. Them eight and a half.
I second that Commissioner Wilson.
We'll retro it back to January first, then we revisit this January, uh, July first. And if, if it's where we need to give across-the-board raise to catch back up.
Okay, so Commissioner Wilson has a eight and a half on the floor, it has been seconded by Commissioner Clemmons, is there any discussion?
I'm gonna do discussion and the only reason that I'm agreeing to the eight and a half is because we need to do something. But ten point five should have been given to those employees. Ten point five, cause if you're giving everybody eight point five, why not give the ten point five?
We just need you to raise your hand and we can make that happen.
Okay.
Raise your hand, we can.
Across the board.
Ten point five, I said ten.
We're not going to create pay compression, and that creates pay compression. And that has been demonstrated and shown to us. We got a motion on the floor, eight and a half, you have seconded, all in favor of the eight and a half, raise your hand. Okay, motion carriers, we got a raise, eight and a half. Next item on the agenda is planning and zoning, public hearing. Can we get, uh, a planning and zoning to come ahead, come forward and present?
Good morning. Samir Patel of Cummins, Georgia, requests a rezoning from RA Residential Agriculture and C-1 Neighborhood Commercial to R-2 Single Family Residence for property located at thirteen seventy-six Old Conyers Road and Land Lot Ninety-Six of the twelfth District. The property consists of three point one nine four plus or minus acres, and the request is for four single-family residential lots. The subject property is highlighted in green and is northwest of the Brookwood Estates R-1 and R-2 subdivision. The property has a future land use designation of low-density residential, which does support the R-2 zoning district. This site plan submitted, and the application is shown on this slide, and consists of four lots that meet all R-2 zoning district standards. The applicant is requesting to rezone three point one nine four plus or minus acres from RA and C-1 to R-2 on Septic for the purpose of a four parcel lot split. On November eleventh, twenty twenty-one, the zoning advisory board recommended approval of the applicant's request with staff conditions as shown on the slide. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, so this is a public hearing. If anyone, uh, that's here, would like to come and speak in favor, you have ten minutes. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition, you have ten minutes. Uh, this is in District Four. Uh, Commissioner Thomas, are you familiar with this?
Um, I am, and I'm a little surprised that they have no one here to even represent their concern. But I have no problem with this development, it's only four, four, one, two, three, four homes.
Four.
Uh huh, that's it. And they are sitting in a place where they do not have access to a direct, um, utilities and sewer lines, so they're asking for septic tank. And even the commercial places there is on Septic, and that's not too something they want, they just don't have access to it. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Yes, I've got a motion on the floor about Commissioner in District Four to approve, can we get a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Clemmons, if there's no further discussion, all in favor. Motion carriers. Next item on the agenda, an ordinance by Henry County to amend the Unified Land Development Code of Henry County.
Good morning again. Uh, today I bring to you, uh, you, four ULDC amendments to modify various parts of the mixed-use standards and highway corridor overlay district. On this slide are the code sections that we are proposing to amend. In your exhibit books, there is a detailed red line copy of all the amendments. The first amendment is for section four point zero one point zero five, additional standards for mixed-use zoning district within the highway corridor overlay district. Currently, in the ULDC, properties that are within the overlay, commercially zoned, and carry a future land use designation with a maximum density limitation such as rural residential, low-density residential, medium-density residential, high-density residential, and mixed-use are permitted to be developed as mixed-use properties. The issue with section four point one point zero five is that those criteria, with those criteria, apartment units are required to be fifteen hundred square feet. For a one or two-bedroom apartment, this requirement is quite unrealistic and unnecessary. Planning and zoning is proposing that the amendment read as follows. The heated square footage of the apartment or condominium units within the mixed-use building shall be the following. The minimum heated square footage of a one-bedroom apartment should be six hundred and fifty square feet. The minimum heated square footage of a two-bedroom apartment should be eleven hundred square feet. The minimum square, the minimum heated square footage of a three-bedroom apartment should be fifteen hundred square feet. Um, before I move on, do we have any questions about that particular amendment?
What is the current square footage?
Fifteen hundred, and that's, that's the size of a RA, like, minimum house. So, so right now, one, two, and three-bedroom apartments would have to be fifteen hundred square feet, and that's, that's just kind of ridiculous.
So you're changing the one and two bedrooms, but leaving the three bedrooms to fifteen hundred?
Yes ma'am. Okay, moving on.
Can I ask a question, how did you come up with the six fifty square foot footage for a, a one bedroom?
We looked at some previous rezonings, um, for mixed-use buildings, and they were typically around that size. So we just decided to, it was actually six hundred, but we just decided to bump it up to six fifty for one bedroom. South City Development on Jonesboro Road is similar to these numbers.
Yeah, I have a problem with the square footage.
Yes ma'am.
Of the one and two bedrooms.
Okay.
I think it's too small.
Alright, moving on.
Commissioner, um, Thomas, did you have a question or statement?
Uh, I concur especially with the one bedroom, maybe seven hundred and fifty, but a six hundred and fifty, I'm, I was trying to put in my mindset, especially if there was a senior or someone that needs to move around, maybe some type of disabilities and what have you, they need just a little bit more space. So I had more concern with that one bedroom, maybe get at least a seven fifty, but the other two should be okay, the eleven hundred and fifteen hundred.
Okay, so, if you want to make that a motion towards the end, we can do that, it wouldn't be an issue.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to.
Oh wait, wait, I'm sorry.
Oh, he's not finished.
We have, uh, three more amendments.
He got, he got three more things.
They're kind of dense. Okay, so the next amendment is for four point zero five point zero two, boundaries of the highway corridor overlay district. Staff is proposing to add properties along, um, to add the properties along both the Western Parallel Connector and Patrick Henry Parkway. Here's where the proposed Western Parallel Connector is, and here's Patrick Henry Parkway. It's kind of hard to see, but they're hashed in blue. The properties that are hashed in blue on our maps are highway corridor. Um, so we're just, uh, proposing to add these properties to highway corridor, cause we, uh, we see some development coming in, um, soon. Ma'am. So, basically these parcels, we're gonna add them to highway corridors so they have those more strict highway corridor standards.
And those standards are?
Okay, so, basically typical highway corridor standards is like facade elements, brick, stone, stucco, um, sidewalks, ten-foot sidewalks, street trees. Uh, basically just to make the highway, um.
Uniform.
Uniform, correct. Okay, moving on to the next one. This next amendment removes certain parking requirements for the overlay. Staff has found that these standards are more appropriate for specific sensitive environmental areas rather than an overlay throughout the entire county. Um, the proposed sections to be removed are redlined on this slide. Typically, these, um, these standards, they're just not really necessary, we, we barely bump into them and we, they were a good shot for the first, you know, you, for the highway corridor, but we've just found out over the years that they're just not necessary. And the last amendment.
Can you, can you go back to that slide, I'm sorry?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, go ahead.
Alright, moving on, last one. Section four point zero five point zero six B prohibited uses. Um, this final amendment updates the prohibited uses within the overlay. Staff is suggesting adding vehicle sales new and used to the prohibited sections, which would basically mean they're not allowed within highway corridor. And specifying the car wash use. Currently, car washes are permitted within the overlay, but staff wants to clarify that the car washes need to be the primary business and within a commercial business, uh, but commercial building. So, this accomplishes that in the red lines. Staff recommends approval of all of the overlay, uh, all of the amendments presented, as they will make the ULDC and the Highway Corridor Overlay District more efficient. And again, we're, we're happy to change anything around if it's not too complicated. And I would be happy to take any questions.
Okay, Commissioner Clemmons has a question.
Go back to, um, the Western Parallel. So Sheri, I wanted to know, and I'm asking you just because you know this, this, this stuff backwards and forwards. Um, in the highway overlay, um, in the Western Parallel Connector, if we put this in the highway corridor and then we say no, um, car lots? New or used, I'm okay with used, but let's say, like, if you go down seventy-five, you see car lots on that seventy-five. I think that may limit something in that Western Parallel Connector, considering that's gonna be a four-lane coming up. So, I don't know if they would be able to come back with conditions for that, but I think that we need to do something as to not, um.
Limit?
Limit that highway corridor, that Western Parallel Corridor. The other thing is that if we're gonna do this with the, um, highway corridor, would this be an appropriate time to make the Western Parallel Connector more mixed-use, uh, multifamily, can we add this into this now? Because we have those restrictions in there.
So I believe that would have to be a comp plan amendment, because we would have to amend the land use map designation to change it to mixed-use. Now, the only other thing, and Kamau helped me here, we may be able to add a provision that mixed-use light developments will be permissible. But it still would have to be consistent with the future land use map.
So it is, it is, and I think Tucson, can you come up and speak about that? It designates that for the future land use map? And so Tucson has said over and over, we've got something in place where if it's already designated as that, it states that, but I would rather put it in writing.
Absolutely.
I think the, the cleanest way to do that is to come back with a comp plan amendment for that area to change the future land use.
But that's what I'm saying, should it's not being here now, then, we need to do it all together, because we're changing this. And, and, and board, we're talking about that Western Parallel Connector, if we limit what can go there? Then you're gonna have a four-lane road going up on the side of seventy-five where you can't put big office buildings, or we had an issue with Costco. Who, they need this type of, that, so we need to make this Western Parallel mixed-use, multi, not, yeah, mixed-use.
So, so most of the, what we're trying to add in now is mixed-use on the future land use map? There might be one or two parcels that's not, but we can make that as a mo, part of this motion, um, to include more mixed-use, uh, what's the word? Mixed-use, um, can't think of the word right now. Uses, mixed-use uses in that area, so we can make that.
Mixed-use uses in the Western Parallel Connector is, is permitted.
Yes, we, and that's, the, uh, uh, overlay allows us much flexibility as well.
Based on what guidelines, cause we don't want, um, the guidelines that they have for, they, they talked about this apartment or whatever they put in there.
So we can remove the new vehicle, we can take that use out, it's being prohibited. And then anything else, um, the, the overlay allows us flexibility to deal with the developer as they come in as well, so if we're looking for mixed-use, we can make that work. Again, I'm not sure right now if the top, but I know the Costco was in, was, uh, mixed-use, and then the, the piece is to the left, uh, that's, that's pretty, about thirty acres or so. It's also mixed-use on the future land use map, so it's, it's workable.
Highway overlay corridor says no, like, the square feet of building size was limited. So that means if somebody wanted to come in and the, and the Costco's or Sam's or whatever is, this would prohibit it, based on this.
So. No, 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 so, so the, the overlay says a hundred and forty-nine thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand square feet. So the Costco came in right at like one forty-eight, so we were able to. So we were able to work with them to get, to make that building work. So again, it's this.
Well, I would like to see them both together, because we're saying one thing on the map and then we're saying something else over here.
Okay.
And it needs to, it needs to work together.
So what I would suggest is, when, if you make a motion to this particular amendment, let's, let's leave this one out for now, and then we'll fine-tune the Patrick Henry Parkway and the Western Parallel Connector at another date.
Cause we don't wanna add this in.
To advertise that, because it's a comp plan amendment. So what we can do is check for the next available meeting. Let's go ahead and it'll be board-initiated, so we won't, we won't have to go to, let's just bring it straight to the board if we can do that. But I agree, I think you're gonna run into some issues with specifically, you know, when you start talking about a Costco, Trader Joe's, they have specific specifications. And what I'd like to do is allow staff to at least review them, and then if we know that we've got to work with them, that's what we're gonna do. I mean, that's economic development, we're gonna make sure that we do get those in. But you're right, Costco ran into a lot of issues in terms of what they could and could not do. And we don't want this to be intended to be so restrictive, but you have a corridor that's facing seventy-five, that you know that you're gonna have economic development along that corridor. So we, we can definitely make those changes and then bring it back to the board.
And just for the board, what we ran into is that those, uh, big box or large companies like that, they wanna see residential around them, they wanna see high-density around them. This would limit that in that whole Western Parallel Connector, so we need to make sure that we don't put the Western Parallel Connector in this, then we say there's gonna be, it's gonna just be land there.
It needs to be, it needs to be mixed-use.
It'll be one, three, and four.
Okay, so the motion would need to be for amendments one, three, and four.
And to amend one.
We need to amend the one on the apartments, because I'm with Commissioner Thomas, I just think six.
Just table it and bring it, can we just table it and bring it back?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, okay, all right.
Can we, can we table it to a date specific?
Make a motion that we table this to our first meeting in April.
Okay, all right, so.
All right, thank you for your time.
I'm, I'm sorry. Oh, okay, so, uh, we need a, a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion carries. So next is the ordinance of Henry County to amend the Henry County Code of Ordinances.
Good morning, Chair, or Vice Chair. Commissioners, um, hopefully everyone had a chance to look through the, uh, the commercial vehicle ordinance, or better known as the truck ordinance. Um. All right, so the Henry County Code of Ordinances does not currently regulate parking, keeping, or storing, storing of commercial vehicles. Uh, the proposed amendment to the code will provide regulation of the prohibition and allowances for the parking, storing, and keeping of commercial vehicles here in Henry County. Um, the ordinance will establish and clarify the following. Uh, definitions and for commercial and agricultural purpose vehicles and equipment, allowances for specified agricultural vehicles and equipment in certain residential areas, regulation for parking and overnight parking, keeping or storing of commercial vehicles in non-residential areas, areas, and penalties for violations to the ordinance. With that said, um, planning and zoning staff has recommended approval of the, of the, of the changes. Excuse me. You have any questions?
I don't have any questions or comments with regards to, to this ordinance. Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Got a motion, can I get a second? Can I get a second? Okay. Uh, if there's no further discussion, all in favor. Motion carries. Next is the ordinance of Henry County to amend the Unified Land Development Code, Code of Ordinances regarding the regulation of parking. Is that the same thing, or is that a different?
It's, it's a little different.
Okay.
So basically, right now, the ULDC only regulates parking, keeping, and storing, uh, of commercial vehicles in residentially zoned areas. Um, the ULDC will now mirror the Henry County Code that we just adopted. So, um, essentially, they will be, uh, go hand in hand, and code enforcement will be, uh, will now be able to, um, you know, have some teeth in, when they go out and, and deal with these commercial vehicles, uh, as they're parked overnight or what have you. So it's basically the same code, we're just adding a reference to, uh, the Henry County Code in the ULDC.
Okay, any questions? Get a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion, can I get a second? Second by Com, Commissioner Holmes, all in favor?
All right, thank you.
Motion carries.
We need to go back to the item that we tabled, because we did not call for a public hearing, and we did have an individual that was present that wanted to make public comments. And so while the board still can table it, because we advertise it as a public hearing, we do need to call for a public hearing. Thank you, sorry about that.
This is a public hearing, anyone wishing to come to speak in favor?
And Agent Earl.
The one that Mr. Kirk just presented, we need to open it up for a public hearing as well.
Okay.
So we'll go back to the previous one, and then we'll come back to Mr. Kirk, sorry about that.
So we're going to the, the first one.
ULDC Amendment twenty-two dash oh one, we'll just open it up for a public hearing.
Okay, so is there someone that'd like to come and speak in favor of it?
Hello Commissioners, uh, thank you, um, I was here, I, I didn't realize, I've never done this before, so that was my cue to come over here earlier. Yes, my name, my name is.
I'm sorry, Chair Harrell, um, I apologize. This individual was here for the public hearing for RZ twenty-one dash twenty-six that Commissioner Thomas made the motion on. And I believe when you called for those in opposition, he didn't come forward for the opposition, or in favor.
I called in favor.
In opposition, and he felt to come forward. Yes, I apologize, that was, but we still need to open it up for the public hearing for the other items. So if, if the board so chooses, you all can certainly allow him to speak. If not, the matter has been voted on.
Okay, all right, go ahead, sir.
Uh, the only thing I wanted to, uh, request was, um, these four houses are going into a neighborhood where maximum square footage is no more than fifteen hundred, and, um, on the, uh, on the approval, it says twenty-five hundred, and I was requesting it to be sixteen hundred square feet, which is still larger than the current homes in that area. That's the only thing I, I wanted to add.
So the, the subdivisions around here, they are roughly fifteen hundred square feet minimum house. Um, twenty-five hundred is a little steep. Um, so if we wanted to lower it, we can, if not, then we just move on with the original motion.
This is Commissioner Thomas's district, so Commissioner Thomas, I'll push it over to you.
Thank you, Chair Harrell. I'm going to follow planning and zoning, as he stated, they have done the work and know that this there, and if that's what the subdivisions in the areas are averaging at.
They're averaging at fifteen hundred.
Okay, and he's requesting sixteen hundred?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I have no problem with that, Chair Harrell, these are one, two, three, four houses. So I don't have a lot of problems with that at all. So we're welcome to amend the approval that the homes may be sixteen hundred square feet of heated space.
Okay, so then we need to go back, and we need to go back and rescind that motion, and.
As to, um, RZ twenty-one.
Dash twenty-six, someone needs to make a motion to reconsider.
Yeah, they're small.
Okay, so, so Commissioner, so do we need to rescind the motion that we?
You can reconsider the motion, once the motion, you vote to reconsider the motion, and that, to reconsider is passed, then you can revote, or rather, whatever motion you wanna make at that point. So you can pass a motion to amend or what have you. So first, if you can make a motion, uh, for reconsideration.
I like a motion for reconsideration of, I forgot the number.
RZ dash twenty-one dash twenty-six.
Thank you, and have.
RZ twenty-one dash, okay, that's twenty-six, okay, all right.
I'd like to make a motion to rescind the, uh, approval of that motion as previously done.
To, that's, that's fine, someone just needed for the seconding.
Okay, uh, somebody needs to second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, now.
And now you can make whatever.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of RZ twenty-six, twenty-one dash twenty-six, allowing the homes to be a minimum of sixteen hundred square feet of heated space.
Okay, so we got a motion.
Yes.
Can we get a second by Commissioner Clemmons? No discussion, all in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome, okay. So, so where, where are we now?
So now we need to go to ULDC AM twenty-two dash oh one and just call for any, um, public comments regarding that matter.
So is there anyone here that'd like to speak in favor or in opposition of this ordinance? Okay, here and none?
If you want to go to the.
To that Mr. Kirk presented, and just call for a public hearing for those two items.
Okay, so you're finished with your presentation, this is a public hearing, anyone here wishing to speak in favor or opposition of either one of these ordinances? None? Okay. You've already had the vote. Stephanie, is anyone, uh, here for public comments? Okay. We need to get an approval of the minutes from the Fe, February first board meeting. Get a motion? Motion from D? Second from D two, D three, and D two. All in favor? Motion carries. Our upcoming meetings is March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, at six thirty P.M. is our regular BLC. April fifth, twenty twenty-two, nine A.M., regular BLC. I need to get a motion to go in executive session to talk about property acquisition and a personnel matter, we will not be talking about litigation. Can I get a motion to go in executive session?
Somewhere.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, okay, we're going to, uh, redeem to, uh, executive session. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, reconvene. Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. So I need to make a. I'm sorry. We do it, uh.
I got the first and second, did you all?
Okay, all right, all in favor. Executive session, and we are going to, um, need a motion to, uh, approve the purchase agreement for seven seventeen Oak Grove Road, McDonough. Can I get a motion? Motion from Commissioner Thomas, second from Commissioner Anglin. If there's no discussion, all in favor. Motion carries. Um, the second item was a personnel issue, or personnel matter. And, um, get a motion to approve on what was discussed in executive session and guard, regarding an, uh, one of our employees in animal control. A motion to approve from Commissioner Anglin, second from Commissioner Thomas, all in favor. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.